Good evening everyone, welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, August twenty eighth. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. And at this time can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing promotion discipline suspension dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons and to meet with legal counsel to discuss a protected matter.
So Margaret moved, I'll second.
So yeah.
Session. All those in favor? I propose motion carried. We're now in executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to return to open session. And can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the power for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have modifications. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So Christine.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, opposed? Motion carried. Five point one upcoming events Friday, August twenty ninth. Havlin Middle School students schedule walkthroughs at Havlin. Um, the school will be open seven AM to seven PM. Thursday, September fourth, UPK. Oh, UPK through twelve school opens. All schools, uh, check school for opening times. And then Thursday, September eleventh. Is our next board meeting at district office. Open session begins at seven PM. The most up to date information, watch the calendar online. Any other events? Um, moving on to six point one pride.
Right, so.
Two slides.
All right, the first one.
Sure.
So the first slide, uh, we have here was our back to school night, or excuse me, our back to school barbecue. Uh, which was held yesterday. I'm gonna let Melissa Lawson talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, so, um, we had a wonderful community event yesterday. We had over four hundred, um, attendees. From our community, we had fifteen vendors from around the community. And it was wonderful. We had giveaways. We had four members who were grill masters. So thank you to Margaret and Mike and Katie and Carl. For, um, manning the grill. And we gave away about, I think, forty haircuts. Um, for kids so that they look snazzy on the first day of school. Um, we, uh, gave away all of our backpacks and lunchboxes, but also families. Learned about the community resources that we offer. As well as our food pantry and clothing closet, which families were able to walk away with a lot of resources and support. And new wardrobes for the first day of school. So. We're really, um, looking forward to continuing our community school initiative. This year and we'll be communicating upcoming events very soon.
I do wanna do.
You did a good job on your haircut.
Yeah, that's what I said. I was like, I'm next. Uh, I do wanna say the, uh, committee, the steering committee. They have a lot of volunteers that support this, this work. And, uh, we can't do it without them. I wanna thank Melissa Lawson and Melissa Rosario for their leadership. Um, and, and. You know, we, we did not anticipate the number of people that were gonna show up. Our highest number, um, of participants in any given event was about eighty. So we thought, okay, we double. Our numbers so that we could cover, right, our bases. Well, we had, you know, close to two, three hundred percent more, uh, show up, which was an amazing, amazing thing. A lot of the vendors, as I was visiting. He said this was the, the, the best attended event. In the area, uh, in terms of a community, uh, connecting with the school. So. Um, kudos to everyone involved and just let's continue the partnership. We appreciate the support from the board. And really excited about what's to come for, for our community schools initiative.
And I would just add, if I can, that. Um, none of this would be possible without, um. Melissa Rosario, who is. The community schools facilitator and she is so great at making connections and inviting people in. And, um. You know, it's just amazing to watch. And, you know, I look forward to it growing. Our grant is, you know, continuing and, um. We have a lot of great opportunities throughout the year for families to participate in.
And these are all? School families or is this open to anybody?
School families.
Uh, la- lastly, uh, we do wanna recognize one of our, uh, FDR alumnis, uh, Joey, uh, Paterno. Who was named one of the Maris College Football, uh, Team Captain. So we wanna wish him congratulations. And hopefully, uh, we can catch, uh, some of their games this upcoming season. In terms of a report, I do have a couple of items, um, just to share, but I'll, I'll, um. Let you transition before I get into that.
Pride, um.
Any other pride?
No, I think we'll move on to seven point one superintendent.
So I do wanna share, uh, just a, a couple of things in terms of. Um, opening day, um, we're really excited, looking forward to welcoming students. Um, and. One of the things that I'm, I'm most proud of, uh, in the district is, um, last week, we had the board tour some of our schools. Um, with our executive team as well as our, our director of facilities. And I'm really proud of the work that they've been able to just monitor and make sure continues happening. Uh, every school is being worked on this summer. And so, um, the, the pouring of the concrete went in. Uh, it's going in, uh, this weekend for FDR, so we're ready to go with that. You haven't had a chance to see the, the auditorium. It looks amazing. Uh, some finding, final, uh, touches are being done. But overall, we're really excited about, um, the work that's happened and just wanna thank the board, thank our community. For approving those, those capital projects because it really is gonna make a difference, uh, for, for our, uh, students. Um, as well as just con- continuing to show our, our, our deepest appreciation for our facilities. And operations team because there's a lot of work happening and they've been all over it. As well as our technology team, making sure our vestibules are wired and have, um, all the equipment needed to make sure we keeping, we're keeping our students and staff safe. Um, and then lastly, do you wanna share that we had, uh, a, a nice turnout for Tom Hall with regards to our cell phone? Um, distraction free, uh, learning zones, um, and our new policy around that. So we had, uh, about, um, twenty plus, uh, individuals in person and we had. Another twenty or so, uh, online. So, uh, we're really excited. To kinda move forward with this process. I think it's gonna give, um, students an opportunity to learn how to socialize with one another. I know our school leaders have been purchasing, uh, board games. Um, something, something that may be, uh, new to many, many of our, our, our kids. Um, but things that will give them an opportunity to kinda socialize and, and just interact during, during lunch periods and recess. Um, wanna thank our administrators and, um, our, our, uh. Building, building staff, buildings are looking great. They've been working really hard. We had three days of leadership retreat. Really excited about the progress that we've made thus far, this past, this past year. And, and our plan moving forward. So really excited about that work. Uh, with that, that concludes my items and I don't know of anyone.
Yep, um, we held our new teacher orientation earlier this week. And we welcomed twenty five new teachers. Uh, they spent three days learning about our district, our priorities, or, you know, got set up with all of the technology that they needed. Um, I wanna thank Kim Niesel for leading that, that work. Um, and I. Saw a lot of positive interactions and excitement about beginning a new career here in Hyde Park. So. We're excited to have them.
That concludes.
Um, I, I would just like to mention that the transportation department had their opening day this week. Uh, they met at, uh, the Bosse's Conference Center. It's really a nice place for, for them to, uh, get together and, and go through their mandated trainings, but they were also provided some. Um, other presentations, um, things that would just help them with their jobs. It was really well attended. Dr. Roman, uh, was there and gave a little speech too, which was. Uh, great. And then he was bombarded with all kinds of questions, but.
About cell phones.
Cell phones, yeah. But it was really nice to see everybody, um, because they're, they're the first group to really get together. So when they have their meeting, for me, that's like. Um, makes it re- real as close about to start. Um, and I also wanna, uh, mention to the board that. We finally have our new routing software that the board approved, uh, during the budget season and the voters ultimately approved in the budget. Um, Nicole was using it today. She was watching the bus drivers that are out towing their drive runs and it was really neat to see because she could. Uh, see the actual little buses on the map and, uh, click on it and.
Speed.
Driver was, their speed. Um, you know, of course, it's, we're not in session, but it, um, the software was telling her that the bus drivers were three and a half hours late for their runs. But it was just their timing for, uh, when they were going out. It's really neat. So I think we're off to, we'll be off to a great start.
Is that data recorded?
I'm not sure if it's recorded. I can find out.
Try to be interesting because, you know, some, sometimes we get complaints that, oh, this bus was speeding down this road. If we could go back and look and say, well, they weren't.
Information is actually available, yes. I, I was thinking, I was actually picturing, cause I could see the little buses moving on the map. I don't know if that part was recorded, but I know they can pull.
The data.
The data and they can see what time the bus arrived at a bus stop, how fast they were going at, uh, certain types.
That concludes our items. Thank you.
Alright. Moving on to eight point one, uh, can I get a motion to open, uh, public participation?
A move, Katie.
Katie.
Christine.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Do we have a total of three minutes per speaker for a total of twenty one minutes? Uh, please provide your name and address when you reach the podium and we ask that everybody. Uh, be, uh, courteous and respectful of all. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay. Seeing that there's no one, we will close public participation. Uh, nine point one board subcommittee reports and professional development updates. Many subcommittees meet. And professional developments. Alright, moving on to. Board discussion, including consent agenda items. I guess we'll cover any consent agenda items, uh, first. Any questions?
Not really a question. I just, um, well, maybe it is a question and I apologize for not. Contact and beforehand. I was looking at the, all the, uh, the booster club approval forms. And, and I know that it's primarily a way for them to demonstrate insurance and things like that. But one of the things that was interesting to me is that. There seemed to be a standard. Level of insurance for a lot of things, but some of the, there's some of the booster clubs are, they're really quite different. So. For example, oftentimes damage to rented premises was fifty thousand dollars, but there were a couple of cases where it was five hundred thousand dollars. And I was trying to figure out if that's because those particular. Sports were more likely to damage or less likely, but it wasn't, wasn't, wasn't hundred percent clear.
I had to take a stab at it. I think. Damage to, um, like a softball field would be much different than damage to the track or the football, the, the turf.
Right, you know, I thought that as well. I thought that as well, but there were a couple of cases where I thought.
That didn't line up.
It didn't seem to line up entirely to me, but that's, I, I assume that's what it is. It, that, that is just. Different liabilities for different kinds of sports, yeah?
We, we can look into that and just to confirm.
Oh, the requirements from nicer are all the same for the booster clubs.
Were there, but.
The minimum requirements.
Alright, right. Oh, so the booster club can choose to do for, right? It's not that they're, I just wanna make sure new, new land getting taken advantage of, that's all. That's, that was my only concern.
I'm not sure if they, uh, how they receive, if they receive their insurance through an association or if they get on their own.
They all have the same as American.
Yeah.
Whatever insurance, yeah.
Yeah, aim.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, consent agenda items? Alright, so now our board, uh, goal discussion. Our slides. Okay, so we had the goal one, um. Communication structures and, and protocols. So. What Jay put this together to show. You know, how we gonna, how are we gonna show evidence, what the action plan is and, and things like that. So just take a second to. Read that and then we'll discuss it.
The district. Wig, just so that you have the board has that in the event that you do decide to.
Okay.
My, I think one of the things we, we said we obviously gotta remove the chat portion. But then there was a question about. Um, whether, whether we could have a number of community events that people would be agreeing to attend, that every board member will attend. Three community events and I, and I would be in favor of something like that. Actual number that said, yep, so we've met the goal because we did that, right?
Yeah, just, um, so I did get feedback from, um, Carl. And, um. He had two things. One of them was related to communications about the electric bus and. Like, you, you know, how to have better communication about that, which I'm not sure if that's really a part of the goal, just that the next time something big like that, we have to do a better job. Or, or maybe a different job communicating.
Yes.
But he also said he's in favor of having regular community chats. Right, that, that was his, um, that was his take on it. So versus, you know, a chat when needed.
Yeah, well, I would vote no on that.
I do too. I, I, just because I, 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 you know, take time out of my evening and I sit there.
Enough of those.
Talk to you.
Yeah.
I don't wanna do that.
Hey.
So anybody.
Thought we had talked about, um, working on the wording for this one because, um. We had, you know, we're kinda bouncing around ideas. So I was playing around with the wording for that. Um, and as far as the community chat goes, I, I, um. I like the idea of having them when there's an, an issue that we need to talk about. It was, it was. One of the most well attended ones when we talked about the, um, elect, just before the electric bus vote, but I do think if we had done it sooner, we, we might have gotten more people to come out. Um, so. But as far as increased board member presence at district events, we really need something that's more, um. Data, you know, more actionable than just that. So, um.
I did, yeah, that's what he just said, put a number on it.
Right, so what I had was board of, uh, well, even the, um. The goal and then an objective. So the board of ed will actively participate in school. I wanna stress that should be school and community events. To strengthen visibility, foster trust and build meaningful relationships with students, families and staff. Um, because a question came up is. If we just, um, show up at any community event, but I think if we wanna tie what we're doing into the district goals, which is what Dr. Roman was talking about. Um, the district goals are, are heavy on, um. Student achievement, right, um, equity, those types of things. So, um, I just would like the wording to include that we should be at a. Um. School or community event and, and then some of the reasons that we're doing that. Um, and then each board event member will attend blank. I left a number for us to decide, school based events per year. And then it would be similar to what's here, reported at board event meetings, either during pride or board discussions, but that would be a way that we could. And then it would be similar to what's here, reported at board event meetings, either during pride or board discussions, but that would be a way that we could be um because we want measurable and realistic goals, but we also want to be transparent. So if we whatever goal, like if we say it's three, then at three meetings, three different meetings, I would be talking at pride or we, it has to come back to the meeting so that people know where we are and what we're doing, right?
That's the evidence. Part, yes.
Thank you.
Um. You said school or community, but you were very clear that you wanted it to be school. So how about just school-sponsored events?
Well, what would you consider what you did the other day at a barbecue? That's not a school.
It's a school-sponsored event, right? It's part of the community school.
Oh, school, not a specific.
Alright, so I was saying.
Yeah.
This, sorry, district-sponsored event. I that's what I really should have said.
It's focused on the district and students.
Yes, a district-sponsored events.
Well, what else would there not? What what else would there be?
Well, you had sort of community events, like would be going to um
Community Day.
Also, the community, also saving my community day, would that count?
Oh, no, right. It would be school district.
District, right, right.
Right.
Yes.
To the Hyde Park Parade, I'm not gonna.
That's a community event, right? So if it's a work community, that's just to be just just for clarity.
Yeah, I think it should say district, school districts.
Yeah.
Right, because then we're connecting it to the district goals.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So if you, Margaret, the wording, if you want to send to Jay, you know, and then she'll clean up the wording. Because it sounded good. Everybody good with Mar- Margaret's wording? Okay.
Yes.
What what number? Thirty-four?
I like four because it's one every marking period, but that's just.
I hate even numbers. I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, until you can't do even numbers. That's just my my brain was working one per marking period, but other people can have other ideas. That's fine.
That means whatever.
What do you think, Christine?
Four's a good number.
Or Katie?
Four sounds good.
I'm good with four. So we'll do four. And we'll leave community chats kind of open, I think. Sorry, Carl, I think. Unless, do you guys want to have regular scheduled ones?
It was a great idea. We love, that's why we did them. We just didn't get the response that we were hoping for. You know, we were sitting in empty rooms.
Right.
So that's really the, I think us going to events will have more impact than sitting waiting for people to come to us. But I'm not, I'm not against having them if we need something. Like maybe, for example, if the cell phone thing starts to become
Yeah.
a big discussion, maybe do one for that. I don't, I'm not saying we are just.
Do you think it's, do you think we should put something on the website to like on the board page to say?
Was to wait to request.
Request a community chat? And then we'll put one on the schedule? Because I don't know, o- other than sending an email, I guess there's no mechanism for them to.
Every time somebody hits request, are we having a community chat?
No, we'll we'll do it like look at a monthly month period. We'll put some wording out there to say, you know, if if we get so many requests, if we get any requests in the month of January, we'll do an event in February, something like that.
Do need some way to assess if there's a need. I don't think that's what you're getting.
Right.
What if they just call the district office? And or email you guys and say, you would know because you'd get more multiple emails. The the only thing I'm concerned about is if you, if you do it in January and it's a hot topic, well, by February, it might already be too late. So if it's a hot topic and the board members know about it, they can alert me and we can get something scheduled quicker.
Well, I I think we always have the uh E O E at Hyde Park that people send things to, so we can. But but are there other ways? And I think having a clickable link on the website is, I think, what you were suggesting.
Something.
Request a community chat. And and if we get.
And top.
And if we get more than X number, we'll have.
Yeah. Well, not even X number. I mean, I would take one, right? I'd be happy with one person showing up. But um
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, but the the problem with doing it immediately is you want time to advertise. If we're going to go through the motion of doing one, you know, we would want to advertise to say, hey, you know, there's a few weeks lead time to 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 get there.
We post just say three or four community chat possibilities with a registration link and then you know that someone's coming? Like they click on it and say they plan to go to that one about cell phones, for example?
Well, the topic could be, we don't want to put a topic because that's an agenda.
Maybe a like.
It's really up to the community to decide what they want to talk about.
I I like that. It's a community-driven topic.
Right.
Yes, but like community chats, like three during the year and then people could click on one they wanted to attend and register, then you know you have some commitment perhaps.
Hmm.
I don't know.
I don't know. People may think it's anonymous because they don't have to share their name or anything when they show up. So I don't know if that would dissuade people if they have to say their name. I think we leave it as, ah you know, as needed. Make some mechanism, see, see if Rick can put something together on the board page.
Do a, I'll do a Google form.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
We'll, we'll say if we get at least one request in a in a month, we'll do something the following month. So.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on goal one with communications? Goal two, which is support the administrators wildly important goal.
Jay, wildly important ones? I'm sure you handle the care. Yes. Revenance. So what I can share, if it's okay, Mike, is um so our administrative team has has worked on refining the district wildly important goal and the wildly important goal is what what area can we focus on that's going to have the the most significant impact on student outcomes? And so we are focusing on increasing literacy proficiency from an average of fifty-five percent to sixty-one percent by June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six. And this, this um this average consists of because we're looking at K twelve, so it consists of an average uh proficiency from three through eight as well as proficiency as measured by uh the region's exams, all the different regions exams. So we're heading K twelve and so um that's going to be our focus. That's what we're going to be working on as a as a district. So uh I just wanted to share that with you in case, you know, there's a way that the board could also support, you know, the literacy initiative. I think that that would be a a really nice way to kind of funnel from top all the way down uh into the classroom. Like I had looked and played around with this a little bit and I think, I think what we have here is fun. But it's, it's not, there's nothing really actual, it says the the evidence is that we'll see increases to student achievement. That's that's sort of a ambiguous nebulous measurement. And I was thinking, are there sort of, and it basically says we're, we're, we're the cheerleaders saying, yes, yes, this is all good. We should, we should help. I was thinking, are there ways that we could actually do something more concrete? And this is what I came up with. Feel free to shoot it down. Uh I have hold at least one board retreat each year to learn about programs and initiatives uh that could support and promote the districts the wildly important. So the idea is that we're we're taking a more active role by going out and seeking uh information through retreats that on on programs and things that would be productive.
So so can I ask a question? It it is it, is it, is it new programs or current programs that are being implemented to learn more about, let's say?
Well, for the ones that are being implemented and and we usually have the the in-house presentations.
Right.
I'm thinking about more like when we had the community chat presentation. We did, we did, we did a retreat on, not community chats, community schools. We, we had a whole presentation on community schools and we learned about that. And that was initiative that that we got on board with because we could easily see how that supported this. And so as we move forward, other kinds of opportunities, initiatives and programs that we ought to at least consider that are in line with it is really what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, at least it's measurable, right? And would you say once a year? At least.
That's what I threw up.
What do we normally do for retreats? Don't we?
We try to do at least one a year.
One sometime, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that that would still be in line with saying we need a board retreat, which i- is that in another goal?
No, no.
Okay.
Just a clarifying question. So it would be something above and beyond like like you mentioned the new program. So we have a new reading program, but the directors give presentations at the board meeting. So you're thinking about something above and beyond?
I'm thinking before, before it got to that stage, right? Someone had to come and present and say, here's this new program, here's what we're thinking about, this is how it would help support, let's have a retreat so the board is really, really well-informed when it comes to times to actually vote on it and listen to it. That's that's really what I what I was. Um we just shifted to a whole new uh software system as well, right? So that's another kind of thing that we could have had a board retreat just to get really, really well.
Do we have enough, like at least one something?
That's the real question.
Like to 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 warrant a a um.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We we do these every year anyway, so as long as we got one this year.
Well, but but it's got to be focused on related to the goal, right? We may have other board retreats if we want to learn about something else.
Yep.
But at least one that's going to be dedicated to supporting this in some fashion.
But I would even say that the the I B one we had is sort of relevant in this, so it's the same thing.
Yeah. Okay, man. Okay, I'm good. I'm good with that um for this. But I would almost say we want to keep the status. Stuff and then like add in.
This would be just an addition.
Right, this would be an additional thing to to add in the um the the board retreat. Okay, anything else on goal number two? Goal number three. Uh board self-evaluation. So this is basically putting these goals together and measuring ourselves against these. And and now we're using the the tool, the the super eval tool where we do Dr. Roman's evaluation. And so we'll have a mechanism now to actually um do self-evaluation um, you know, in the tool. So let's see, our action plan. Board members will input their opinions into the super eval tool. Ass- not opinions, these are our view of assessment views, right?
This is what we had.
Individual assessments, I think, is probably, we're just wordsmithing, that's all. I think individual assessments might.
Board members will attend at least one P D session, virtual or in person each year to enhance the board's operation and effectiveness. Is this the same as is P D can, our our board retreat, is that P D?
Yeah.
Would be, right?
Well, then if we're doing one a year, then that's sort of not necessary to even have in there. If we're already doing board retreat once a year and that counts as professional development, then we don't really need this.
Right, yeah, I'm just.
This wording at all, at all, yeah.
We add it to the other one to support the the goal, their goal.
Yeah.
Then we don't need it in here. Uh be prepared for board meetings by reviewing all materials before each meeting and will ask the superintendent questions about board agenda items before the meeting, so cabinet members can be prepared to answer them at the meeting. Me. I like that goal. Uh I don't know how measurable it is unless we have a quiz before the meeting. If we could do that, I have a.
Well, there's, you can't, it's hard to quantify. But you get a sense for the number of questions that been in the in the cabinet gets a sense for how many questions come in. Right, so if we're talking about needing some way to, in our assessment of ourselves, have have evidence that there's, there is that.
Yeah. I like the idea of a quiz.
Kind of right.
Yeah.
I think it should be a jeopardy.
If you don't score sixty-five or higher.
Line, line fourteen under agenda item three, attachment one. It says, fill in the blank.
What does this acronym stand for?
Like I did do, we talked about wordsmithing a little bit, wordsmithing a little bit, the um just the evidence goal has been met portion for the self, the super valuation. So you see right now it says, using the super value tool, the board will do an annual self-evaluation, which will measure the progress of their established goals. I added by insert date. The board will undertake an annual self-evaluation using the super value eval tool, which will measure the board's effectiveness and identify any areas of board functioning that need special attention. That's the real change that I've added to. This notion that the tool, that the goal of the tool is to help us measure our effectiveness and identify areas of of functioning that need special attention.
Yeah. When uh when is a good date for that?
When we were going to do it? We were going to do one.
I don't think we talked about when, yeah.
I wouldn't want it to overlap with the superintendents. It's too much. Midyear?
I mean, I think mid-year, if we have a chance to evaluate, if we're on the right course.
Yeah.
Then it has to be like a mid-year, otherwise if we wait till the end of the year, it could be, it could be a different board, you know, it could be a different board by, you know, by that, so. Yeah, mid, mid-year sometime?
February?
January?
January.
By January one, is that what's on?
How about thirty?
No, because that's the holidays, really. Yeah, you want to, you want to give us some time after the holidays.
The second, the second January meeting, how about if we worded that way? Because that way it's flexible year to year to year.
Yeah, and it gives us a chance to have a conversation about it at that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else for goal three? Goal number four. Is our superintendent evaluation. So this is making sure we uh do the superintendent evaluation in the super eval tool. Um and we have a date uh by March thirty-first and this is per contract.
So that was, that was my one thing. Sorry, sorry to dominate. Since this is actually a mandated job of the board, is it really constitute a goal? It was really my one question.
That was exactly what I, yeah, I agree. I don't think it is.
And and we have, and and we don't even have chance, uh choice over the date. We have a choice over the, with the tool, using the super value tool versus.
This is one we don't have a choice. We have to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not the goal.
I, so I, I suggested.
I, yeah, I I think so too. Just being.
Now I will shut up.
And then we're down to the three goals because I usually say three, you know, three is a good number of goals. We don't want to have too many.
It's an odd number.
That's your odd number. Christine, what are you gonna say?
Okay, so I know you had some wordsmithing. You had, if you could send that to Jay. And then we'll get that reviewed and next meeting we can uh vote on. Sound like a plan? Alright, I like when a plan comes together.
Are you Hannibal? Can I be the A?
Alright. Um moving on to ten point one, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved to this.
Second, Margaret.
All those in favor? I opposed, motion carried.
I'm gonna say something now or I throw off the point one. But we already voted for that.
Alright, eleven point one, our um Violet Ave interim principal agreement. Did I get a motion?
So moved, Margaret.
Second, Katie.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Christine, did you move? Okay, in your, you're very quiet.
It's okay, Mike. Uh just want to congratulate Jesse Legear for joining our team as an interim principal Violet. She's here, so just want to recognize her. Congratulate.
Can't get away from us. Alright, eleven point two, can I get a motion for district-wide safety plan?
One move.
So moved Christine.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll, I just want to say I would encourage parents to look at this plan. It's very comprehensive. Um and in this time, when sometimes parents are nervous about what's happening in schools, this is a great document to look over because you know, it's a lot of pages, but it really goes through and shows how seriously the district takes student safety and the plans that are in place. You know, it's a lot of pages, but it really goes through and shows how seriously the district takes student safety and the plans that are in place.
And just to add to that is, this isn't the complete plan, there's things that aren't shared publicly that are also.
Yes.
Part of the plan, but they're confidential for a reason.
Right, absolutely.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Um, can I get a motion to enter our second public participation?
So moved, Katie.
Second, Christine.
All in favor? All right, opposed, motion carried. We are now in our second public participation, same rules apply, if you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, Superintendent Trustees, uh, Cabinet Members. Agent Streeters, Gully Stanford, one eighty-one Marshall Road in Soul Point. It's been a while since I've been here, um, but it is always a joy to observe my homeschool district. And its trustees doing such an excellent job of serving the needs of our Hyde Park students. As a Hyde Park resident, I'm always grateful for that, but it's a triple joy tonight. Because I would like to acknowledge, not sure if you're aware of this, uh, that this young man in the front row, Roman Pemberton. Uh, is now a successful graduate of the Youth Leadership Program. Uh, at the Chamber of Commerce where I serve uh as, as a volunteer, I'm a mentor. I'm not pretentious enough to think I could mentor Mr. Pemberton, he really is a great credit. Uh, to um, uh, F T R High School and to, and I know he's going into his senior year, we expect great things of him. And then to coincide with the return. To coincide with the return of Mr. Gary is such a treat, she served with great distinction on this board, of course. And I never got around to asking her before the meeting what she was doing here, so now I know. And I'm thrilled that you've made that appointment in Violet School, so congratulations uh to you. As, as you know, I also serve uh as a, as a trustee on um the BOSI's. Uh, Board of Education, I just wanted to thank you since it's been a while since I've come before you. Uh, for the input you have had both in our successful selection appointment of Jody DeLucia. As our district superintendent who has got off to a wonderful start, but also the input that you've had collectively and individually. Uh, on our strategic plan, it's over a decade since the BOSI's uh had considered. And has now adopted a strategic plan, and I hope you will be able to observe. We'll be doing actually, I think, a public meeting to share uh with the community the highlights of that plan. But also to share with you the reinforcement that Dr. DeLucia has already been making. In strengthening the staffing most recently, so I'm just sharing with you, you probably were watching our board meeting, special board, no, you won't. Uh, uh, but it, it's public knowledge, uh, just this week, uh, we created a new position of Director of Career Technical. Uh, uh, education overseeing both the Career Technical Institute and the Adult Learning Institute, and that will be Nicholas Millis. Who has served us so extraordinarily well uh in, in, in recent years. So we are also in the process of adopting some board goals, I think for the first time. Uh, in living history of the Duchess BOSI's, and I'm just here to say that we hope, uh, we know. How supportive Hyde Park School District has been uh to us in BOSI's, but we hope we're serving you well. And we hope that on all fronts, uh, we're, we're meeting your expectations, I do have finally. Because I don't want to overstay my welcome here, particularly with you anticipating an early adjournment. Um, is, is, is just to say, um, what a pleasure it is to serve with Mr. Spence. Uh, on the Duchess County School Boards Association, he's their president, as you know, uh, this, this year. Um, I happen to be the BOSI's Legislative uh Liaison. To the New York School Boards Association, New York State School Boards Association. Um, it's going to be a challenging year for advocacy as every year seems to be, but the wonderful thing is. Now working with Dr. DeLucia, who is part of Niscos, of course, the school superintendent's. The New York State School Boards Association and the statewide uh BOSI's um, uh advocacy group. We can align, I think, our advocacy efforts so that we can be effective. In ensuring that both the executive uh and the legislature understand our priorities. Uh, here in Duchess County, so as you review um your board uh, 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 goals. You might want to give a little thought of inserting, inserting the word advocacy there in your excellent goal three. Uh, 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 the, the activities of the board, this is measurable. Your uh presence uh and, and support in advocating is so very, very important. Because you are after all the precedents, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to address the board? I think at this time we'll close public participation. And thank you for your comments, uh, Gully, appreciate it. Any other matters deemed necessary by the board? Well, we might have to do a second executive session since Jesse's here, she obviously loves those, so. I don't think we have a need tonight, so at this time, can I get a motion to uh adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved to this.
Second, Christine.
All those in favor? I, opposed, motion carried, meeting adjourned.